Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The regular meeting of the Grosso Township Planning Commission will come to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we actually get into the approval of the agenda, I have a couple of comments and a question first. I have to apologize for the fact that we moved this meeting date around three or four times, or five times. Okay, what I was trying to do was, was find a date where we could have all nine of our commission members here. And as it turns out, the practical answer to that was wait until April, but that wasn't going to work. So I went ahead and we finally came back to the original date that we set for tonight to hold this meeting and recognize that Mr. Rathell is not with us this evening. But I, but John went to a lot of effort to submit his thoughts concerning the master plan and the action items on those to us in writing before he left. So, you know, we have, we're including his, his input in spite of the fact that he's not here. So, again, don't like to have musical chairs for meeting dates, but in this case, you know, we did the best we could. Second thing is somewhat off topic, but the Jewish Fresh Start legal suit against the township apparently is proceeding. My records were subpoenaed, and I provided those to the township here today, in fact, or yesterday. I'm curious, was anybody else up here subpoenaed besides me? Jay, you were?
I was as well.
You were?
I did get an email.
So essentially then everybody down the line that was part of it, including Jim Davis, okay, who was there for one meeting apparently before he left the planning commission, was subpoenaed. You know, I talked with Derek about this, and basically what you need to do is provide any, any written documentation that you have, whether it's in the form of emails, or files, or even paper copies of things, plus any printouts of anything that came that you might have written about that particular application on the internet. Okay, that's the, that's the material that they're looking for. This material will go back to Derek first, and then to our township attorney, who will screen it, to make sure there's no things like a client privilege, attorney-client privilege, or whatever, before that, before they cheaters decides to release the information back to the court. It's a good idea that once you submit your information, have the township communicate back to you that you have submitted it per the requirements of the subpoena, so that you have that documentation in hand that you have met, from your perspective, the court's requirements. So, that was the, that's the advice I have to share on that. And information is due to the township by the end of the month. Any comments on that?
Nope, you nailed it. Thank you.
John, just let me just add to that, that if you don't have any information, that's our right to say you don't have any information, right? So you don't have to make it up, you don't have to look, I mean, if you don't have it, you don't have it, and that's what you want to tell Derek.
And so the response back to the township in writing is, we don't have any, there's no material to be had?
Correct.
Okay, and that, that would meet the requirements. Okay. No further questions or comments on that. We'll get into the agenda. Does anybody wish to add or delete items from the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
Motion Kobalak, support?
Support.
Support. Eric called a question, all in favor?
Aye.
The agenda stands as presented. We will move to the minutes from, from the meeting on January 6th. Other comments on those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
Motion Kobalak, support?
Support.
Eric called a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We now have public comment, an opportunity for citizens to speak to the commission about items not on our agenda this evening. Are there any hands about not on the agenda? No hands, so we'll move on. Election of officers. I was a little surprised about this, particularly with respect to the chair, because for the last 10 or 12 years or so, in spite of what's in the bylaws, the township board has specified who the chair of the commission is. And now I'm seeing that now we're, we're back in the business of electing the chair. Any comment on that?
I mean, we're the working body, I think it's right that we, you know, make the recommendation on who we should, think should be chair.
Okay. All right, so we're going to start, we'll start with the chair. Would anybody like to be nominated for chair of the planning commission?
I nominate John Schweickert to continue as chairperson.
Is there support?
Support.
Are there any other nominations? Called a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We will now move to vice chair. That's Mr. Fruci at my right. We entertain motion for vice chair.
Make a motion now to H.J. Fruci as vice chair.
Support. Motion Kobalak, support. Schweickert called a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Any other, any other nominations?
I'll just express my interest in potentially being either vice chair or secretary. You know, this is kind of like out there, I just want to say that, you know, again, just expressing my interest in being a part of that leadership in the future.
Like, in the future? Do you want to nominate yourself?
Well, I thought that would be a conflict of interest to nominate myself, so I just figured I'd just put it out there. And again, like for either position, I'm not trying to replace anyone specifically.
Just basically make a motion and a second, and we'll have a vote. Okay, then, since there's no second motion, we'll call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, unanimous. Will now move to the position of secretary. Mr. Ranka, to my left, is the secretary. I want to entertain motions for the position of secretary.
Make a motion to nominate Eric Ranka to continue as secretary.
Support. I will support it. Additional nominations?
I'll throw Brian's name in the hat if he's interested.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll nominate.
All right, so we have nomination for Brian. Do we have support? Have support from, oh, Dan. Okay. Called a question. We will make this a roll call vote. We'll start it with Mr. Kobalak. Brian?
Myself.
Angela?
Pollack.
Jay?
Ranka.
Schweickert, Ranka.
Ranka.
Dan?
Ranka.
Bill?
Ranka.
Okay, six to two. Mr. Ranka will continue as secretary. Thank you very much. That's a, that's a, that's a good thing to do, you know, when you want to do something, put the, put your name in the hat, you know?
Congratulations to Mr. Ranka. He'll do a great job.
All right. So congratulations to all three, or condolences, take your pick, but we'll move on.
A little of both.
We will move now to the next item, which is approval of master plan action items. Have an introduction, some of it you've heard a number of times, because this is for the public. And then we'll move specifically into what's gone on since the last meeting, and what a proposed path forward will be in terms of decision-making, which will be the subject of a motion for the planning commission to decide. First, the Grosso master plan is a planning commission document. It serves purpose, two purposes. It documents what Grosso is today, and what the vision for the, for this, for our community is in the future. It is the underlying basis for the zoning ordinances. So all zoning ordinances must tie back into the content of the master plan in order to be legal. So it's a very important document. The master plan contains multiple elements. Those that are of particular interest to the planning commission are land use and housing. At the November 4th meeting, the planning commission approved to release the draft of the, of the, of the master plan for a public comment. And that comment period lasted for 65 days and has since expired, I think.
It has, but it's still in review.
But it's still, it's still, Ross has kept it open since we haven't made a final decision, but legally we're required to have 65 days, and we're past that. Okay? And we're now looking to finalize the document, to be able to make a recommendation to the township board for their, their final decision on the, on this master plan document. When we met on November 4th and October 2nd, or December 2nd, I should say, it was agreed that the planning commission was going to tackle all of the action items that, that had planning commission as a responsible party. There are quite a few of them. And, and we, we, we tried, okay, at the January 6th meeting, to actually undertake that. And we were operating from the standpoint of attempting to build a consensus among the nine commissioners that were there about, about each of the action items, of which there are probably 40, that, and it, it was a bit of a challenge. We managed in an hour and a half, 90 minutes, to basically tackle two and a half. We didn't even get through the third one. Okay, so you multiply all of that by the large number of, that were out there yet to be done, and it was obvious that the methodology that the planning commission was attempting to use wasn't going to work. Okay, so at that point, the planning commission took, chose to take a different direction. They actually charged the officers to go forth and, and to make recommendations back to the overall planning commission, following the input of each commissioner in writing on each of the items that, the action items that were out there. So we, we, we set a deadline, I believe for the 21st, which was when we, we wanted to have any comments on each individual action item back. And when these, when, we got, we caught comments back from everybody initially, but from, from Brian and Angela. Okay, the comments that we did get, I put into a master spreadsheet where you could, you could work across and you could see what everybody thought about an individual item. After the 21st, on the 23rd, we went ahead and the officers met, and we went through the list, and we made initial recommendations. But, you know, as we, as we were going through this, we didn't feel comfortable about it because we didn't have the final input. We needed the input from all the commissioners. So Ross and Angela, Ross contacted Angela and Brian, and they promptly sent in their information, which I added to this spreadsheet. And Ross further sent the spreadsheet to the Smith Group to get their comments, because some of the things that we had said were more questions than anything else. And, and it offered, it offered an opportunity to get Smith Group clarification on what, kind of what they really meant. Okay? So their comments were put in. So now we had, we felt a complete package of information with, with everybody's input visible and clearly able to be interpreted. So we went back through our list again, in a separate meeting, the officers, and quite a few things changed. You know, where initial recommendations weren't the final recommendations. We did this in such a fashion that they were color-coded, where a recommendation that we initially made changed, it got a different color code, we sent that back out to everybody. And so you could see where we, where we actually stood. I should have pointed out too, that while the comments were coming in, Ross forwarded over to me all of the public comment that he received, and there were, there was input from, I don't know, maybe seven or eight or nine people, some of it was letters, some of it was emails, some of it was just comments. But that was, that was all summarized, and you have that in your package here tonight, where the essence of what the, the comment was is included. And so this was another piece of information that we incorporated into our discussion as we, as we met to, to make recommendations. So that, that gets us up to where we are tonight. Now, in order, in order to keep this, this very simple for, for the commission, we, the officers kind of came up with a strategy here. It's a strategy that, that we want to propose to the commission, but again, it's, the commission has to decide if you want to go this, this route. So it'll be by a vote. But you have in your package, the, the summary of, that I prepared, that I prepared, of what the executive committee had done. That, that's one piece of documentation. The second piece of documentation is the write-up of all of the input from the public that, that was out there. And you have a simplified version of the spreadsheet, which, which basically lists the initial Smith recommendation for an action item, and next to it, the recommendation that, that the officers decided to present forward to the commission tonight. So it's that spreadsheet, or that, it's actually PDF at this point, that we're going to look at in order to proceed. Again, we, we discussed at length how to, how to accomplish two things. We want, we want the, every, every commissioner to have an absolute opportunity to change or modify any of the recommendations that we've made. Okay, that's, that's important. You know, you may not, you may not agree, you may want something different, and that's, that's perfectly welcome. But we wanted to do this in a fashion that we did not fall back into the trap that we were in back in, in January, where, you know, we got down into wordsmithing, and it was painful. So, as we talked about it, we, we have a recommendation that, that would be presented as a motion to the commission, where as opposed to voting individually on an action item, we will take blocks, and the blocks are defined as the major objectives. For example, we're talking about natural resources, and there may be five action items underneath it. We will not vote individually on each of the five, we will vote only on the block. And if a commissioner feels that one of those five is not the right recommendation, then at that, then when we get, when we, when we talk about this block, you make, you can at any point make a motion that says, I, you know, I support the four of the five, but I want number five changed, and this is how I want it changed. Okay, you make a motion to that effect, if it's seconded, we vote on it, yes or no? And as, as everybody would expect, it's majority rule. That may mean that, you know, different people have different ideas about it, we may vote on the same block two or three times before we finally reach a consensus, where a majority clearly states, this is what we are going to approve. So, that's the idea. But coupled with this is, is the fact that, you know, everybody's had a lot of time to study this. You know, we've been working on this for quite a while. And so we thought we ought to attempt to, we ought to hold the discussion on, by each commissioner, to, to three minutes. Because even at that, if every commissioner talks about a particular objective, that's three times eight, that's 24. That's 24 minutes, again, which would be very long. So, you know, if you, if you, if you don't have anything to say about it, then I suggest you not say anything, so we can keep this process moving. But I want to limit, limit the timeframe, if possible, to three minutes. And in that period, you would succinctly state, I think this should change, and this is the reason why. Okay, and then we'll, then we'll solicit feedback. That is the manner in which the executive committee thought that, that we ought to approach this. It's different, you, we probably, well, we've never done anything like this before, but then again, we've never worked on a master plan before like this. So, I would entertain discussion on the methodology and/or a motion.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve the methodology as presented.
There a second?
I'll support.
Brian will support. Discussion. Do any of you have concerns about this? I want everybody to be comfortable about it.
I do have concerns. A couple of things, just publicly, that I want to note. I, I did provide some edits in, back in December. It's noted here a couple of times that my edits weren't included. I did provide edits, I, and then...
I'm sorry, I didn't.
It's okay. I, and it's fine, I provided them early on, I think it was perhaps Mr. Kobalak's suggestion, and I took it a little too seriously, went right in and sent my edits over, and, but they weren't in the same format. So then I connected with Ross after that point with the Excel spreadsheet, and kind of had the chance to review and provide feedback, which I appreciated, being able to see kind of where everyone's position was. But I just wanted to correct that, just since, you know, live meeting for the public.
I apologize for that, I did not know.
No, that's okay. I just want to make sure no one thinks I'm a slacker. I do have concerns, and I'll, and I'll just kind of keep it brief, but I, my concerns are more about the overall process. The idea that we're eight or nine appointed commissioners, we're not elected by the public, we've been appointed over, you know, quite some time, and our role I see as more of oversight and, you know, kind of providing value and input and upholding what our experts who we hire in the township hall, who have studied these subjects, or experts in their field, I mean, their day-to-day operationally is upholding these plans that are being put together. And, you know, and also this idea that we vetted, we, you know, RFQ, vetted multiple consulting companies, the one we came back with spent, I don't know, 18 months with us, 90 grand. I feel, I do feel like it's a bit irresponsible and a little futile to have spent as much time as we have picking this plan apart, that experts in the field who gathered public input in many meetings and open sessions and virtual sessions and tours, and came back to us several times over, it, it, it doesn't sit well with me. That being said, I'm more than happy to participate. I will say that the majority of my feedback, you know, when I look at the plan, we're looking at potentially undoing, or deleting, or editing more than 50% of the plan as it was put together, some of which has been already reviewed and approved by the DDA, the DPS Commission, other commissions that walked through it and said, yeah, we're comfortable with this. So I don't know that it's our, the nine of us, I feel like it's a little bit of a, too much of a power play over the DDA and the DPS and other commissions to say, yeah, well, we realize that's important to you, but, but we don't feel like it's important, you know, from our perspective. you know, from our perspective. So I think, you know, I'd like to listen to what everyone has to say. I think largely as we vote on each of the blocks, I don't want it to come as a surprise to anyone, but I will likely not be in favor of deleting any of the suggestions because they came based off of 18 months of expert work in the field, putting public opinion together. You know, we have a stack of the public input, which is only nine, but there was 18 months of, you know, lots of input gathered and, and trends and it just, I think a lot of this is just giving us the opportunity to study, take a step back over the next 10 years and remain nimble enough to still allow Groseal to operate in the wonderful island community that it is, but also give us and our business owners and our property owners, you know, maybe a little more opportunity to be nimble and, and make, be adaptable. I guess I'm not looking for huge change, I'm just looking for us to be able to be adaptable. And I do have one question, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I have a question for Brian and I don't want to put him on the spot, but I'm curious. You see a lot of communities, you've been with us for a really long time, you've probably walked through a lot of master plans. Have you ever, like, been privy, how has this worked out with other communities when they address a master plan or there's, you know, kind of some discourse?
I mean, in all honesty, every master planning process in every community is different. So, I mean, you follow the same general protocols laid out by the state law, but every community is its own with, you know, different individuals, different priorities. So I can't really say that this is just like something else or dislike something else. This is the process you guys have undertaken and it's, ultimately it's your plan. I mean, that's, that's the reality of it. So there seems to be, obviously there's a little disagreement, I think, amongst the, the nine commissioners with what some aspects of the plan do or don't say, but that, that happens. I mean, that's just the reality of it. You're not going to ever have a plan that is perfect, that 100% of everybody supports or agrees with. So I don't, that doesn't really answer your question, but.
No, I think, no, it gives me good perspective. I mean, I think that's, yeah, I, I wouldn't expect that everyone in every community would be in agreement, no doubt, but.
It's hard, it's hard to get 10,000 people consensus, so.
Right. I'm, I'm more concerned about the nine of us.
Understood, I understood.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's, I think, I think that's really captures a little bit of where my head is.
Well, why don't, why don't we, why don't we go around the table and discuss these points? Jay?
Okay. No, I, I'm glad to have an opportunity to address Angela's comments. I think they're well thought out and, and important for us to consider, right? We hired an expert, a firm of experts to come in and do the study and they did spend a considerable time, I think, speaking only for myself. I feel like the consulting firm did, asked a lot of the right questions, but I, I don't feel like they came away with the right answers for, for Groseal in many cases and, and therefore a significant amount of rewrite to, to what they had drafted, I think, is in order. Groseal is a unique place. You have to, it's not easy to get to, you know, it, it doesn't have a lot of the things that other places have that have similar kind of socioeconomic characteristics. But it, so it's, it's kind of a place that you have to, you either get it or you don't. And, and I just, I didn't get the sense that our lead consultant or the firm as a whole really got it, understood what made Groseal special and the kind of place where we have chosen to live. And while I am, that, that doesn't mean I don't think there are things that we need to change. I think there are some things that we could change to make them better, so I don't mean it to say we have to just maintain everything that we have without change. I think some of the changes, I think, would not be appropriate, some of the suggested changes would not be appropriate for the unique character of Groseal. And so therefore I, I was on board with a lot of the kind of, I think, significant edits, I think, maintaining a lot of the, the concepts, but, you know, maybe changing the verbiage in many cases from, you know, change to maintain, you know, not those words specifically, but that sort of concept. And, and particularly about maintaining the character, right? The, the specifics of how we do what we do and, and exactly what the rules are and what we allow and don't allow isn't, you know, I think is, is all fine as long as the, we're talking about maintaining the character that, that makes us unique and makes it special. And so I, I thought those, the, the changes that, that, that I see in the, in the proposal, you know, kind of fit what I would be looking for.
Thank you, Jay. Eric, your thoughts, please.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a mixed bag. Yes, we paid a consulting company to do this, it's a massive process. When I read through it, right, I mean, what is a master plan? It's not, it doesn't set our ordinances, it tells what our priorities are for our ordinances. But just because it says it doesn't mean we need to do it unless an outsider comes in and says, oh, but your master plan says you need X, Y, and Z, you haven't caught up with your ordinances, so I want to go do X, Y, and Z and force your ordinances to catch up. So that's the way I look at it. So it, it doesn't force us to change the ordinances unless someone outside forced, forces us to change the ordinances. So that's why we need to be very careful with it as far as just accepting what some consulting group did. A lot of what they did is, is good, a lot of it I definitely agree with, but, but there's some of it there's not. So in particular, there's uses by right that they want and that's basically just so that developers can, can come in and do what they want versus having to go through a planning commission process. And Groseal is a special place. It needs special use for certain areas, not all areas for sure, but certain areas. Macomb Street District is, I think, I think one of those areas. I saw a lot of cookie cutter language in the, you know, in, in the, in the master plan, like if it says this, boom, this goes to your action items. So I saw a lot of that cookie cutter, a lot of it's duplicative, it's, it's unnecessary. By the same token, you know, they've got things in there like they want us to allow by right cottage courts, right? I don't think cottage courts belong in Groseal. So it does ourselves a disservice just to take some, you know, some consultant's word at face value, 100% of what they said. And, and, and I think we're doing ourselves and our community and the township board a significant disservice if we don't go through the details and, and give them our recommendations.
Thank you, Eric. Dan?
Yeah, I, I think a few comments that I had is, you know, for one, you know, I think a lot of the suggestions that were made by the consultant were, were great suggestions. Some are great for, for, you know, many communities, but didn't necessarily apply for Groseal. You know, and a few of them were like design standards. Design standards are more of telling people how, how you want things to look. And from all the members on the board and also from the community, people, I think people was clear expressed, they, they wanted to keep things unique in Groseal and didn't want it to tell people how the architecture should look. Also, there, there were some suggestions that, that applied, that there's really no areas to implement these suggestions. We'd have to rezone areas in order to have that option. So I didn't really feel that those items fit. Also, there, there were several items that were already in the ordinance, so I didn't feel there was any need to, to re-review those items, they're already in the ordinance. So those are basically the things that I, so I, I felt it was important to review these and, and to adjust these to fit to Groseal, Groseal itself. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dan. Bill?
I'm new to this affair. I've listened to what has been said here. We have a lot of people here who, in my opinion, are very intelligent and they have come to a conclusion after a lot of thought. I've not had opportunity to become comfortably familiar with the details in this, but I can see that the devil is always in the details. I'm willing to sit here and say I would go with whoever they chose to, with any of you who would use to vote whichever way was there and that the majority have prevalence on this. At the same time, there's been so much thought here and so much concern, I believe everybody is sincere in their belief. It would be my hope that when we have future issues to deal with, we don't let whatever this opinion was block our ability to communicate with each other in a thoughtful and respectful way thereafter. I think I'll leave my remarks at that.
Thank you, Bill. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do share a lot of Angela's feedback. I think that she put it very eloquently, the things that I've had in my mind since the beginning of this process. And I do agree that, you know, again, like there's, you know, this was, you know, put together by professionals that do this, you know, for many communities and this did have, you know, acceptance by other commissions and then more specifically the departments that do run this. So it's like, I don't want to like go against what they actually would prefer as far as like what could be, you know, useful for them in like doing their jobs. I hear a lot of people saying about maintaining the identity and uniqueness. I mean, honestly, you know, again, I'm a planner by trade, you know, I've worked in many communities, I've done master plans, I, you know, I talked to like, with my main job is like 230 units of local government, every community says they're unique. Every community says that, you know, they need to maintain their identity. So I mean, it's kind of cookie cutter to say itself. It's like, you know, what's the real meaning behind that? And while it may not be intended, I think sometimes some of this can be looked at as it's code for exclusionary, you know, exclusions, like to keep people out, you know, to have this NIMBYism or not in my backyard. And so I hear, you know, fellow commissioners saying, well, I don't like this type of land use, I don't like this type of housing, it doesn't fit here. That's one person's opinion. And I feel like, again, we're not dictating that this needs to be the case and you have to build exactly this type of structure, like this way in this specific area, and it's going to be going in next week. I mean, this is about keeping things open for the future because honestly, you know, in general, we need to be more accepting. You know, there's a reputation of Groseal being exclusionary already. But more importantly, you know, the master plan is a forward-looking document, you know, going out into the future. And what do we know about the Midwest? What do we know about Michigan? What do we know about southeast Michigan and the metro Detroit area? It's like we have aging residents. And so, you know, people are going to be older, people are going to have different needs. You know, we have young people as well as that have different sides. There's, you know, a lot of predictions that the single-family housing market is going to be oversaturated, that people that are in their homes right now, when they go to sell because maybe they want to go to Florida, maybe they want to get a, a townhouse somewhere, there's going to be such a glut of single-family housing out there that people are not going to be able to get a return on their investment. And that's scary. So it's like, I feel like if we're just keep doubling down on exactly what we've done in the past, you know, we might be, you know, worse off. You know, we need to be able to hedge our bets and be a little more mixed and have different things out there. Again, like there's shift in the housing demands, it's really, a lot of people are looking for more urban areas and town centers. And I'm not saying to make Groseal like Detroit or Ann Arbor, but again, you can do things on different scales for like different types of town center designs, little hamlets, things where you have, you know, controlled aspects of urbanity, where things are walkable, where you actually do focus in on the design because you know the feel of what you want. And if you leave it up to the, you know, the developers, one, they have to kind of mind read. So it's like they're going to, you keep on coming back and I know that we do this all the time, we say that, oh, we don't like this type of material, we don't like the way this is designed. Like, we have this feedback more so like at a planning commission meeting, which is good dialogue, but, you know, it takes more time. And if we want to be more redevelopment ready to try and be able to cut the costs and get people more interested in developing on Groseal, we should give them more ideas of what we do like. And so I really think that there is a place for design standards. You know, again, it doesn't have to be like thou shall build this, but it gives people an idea of what you like. Doing form-based code and being able to have build two lines and to be able to show, again, like what type of, you know, forms that you want in a downtown area is great. And I heard people saying, well, we can't do something because, you know, rezoning would be required. Like, that's what a master plan is for. It's like you figure out what you want your future land used to be and then if you need to rezone in the future, well, then you've got the actual backing to do that. It doesn't look as spot zoning. It doesn't look like some sort of knee-jerk reaction. You had this planned for years in the past and now is the time to actually, you know, rezone something because it makes sense. So again, you know, I just want to put it out there that, you know, I've been pretty vocal about this at these meetings. I apologize that I didn't get my answers in writing to you earlier on, but, you know, once, you know, reminded about it, I did submit and I did like include specific language or focus in on certain words that I think really changed the meaning of what's out there. So again, I understand that we want to move forward with this, you know, we, if, let's say that the master plan, there's 90% of that what I like. So it's like, you know, you don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, you don't want to make this much longer, so I understand the process that we're going to do here tonight. But I just wanted to preface that, again, like if we're going this way, we can have a better understanding why I might be a no vote on certain items. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Kobelak?
Yeah, I don't know if I, there's much more to add after all the comments to date. I guess I don't think we're doing anything that's irresponsible. I think that's, that's, that's a harsh, harsh thing to say because I think all of us have put a lot of time and effort in this process. I don't think it's a power trip. I think the planning commission has always been the one that has overseen the master plan in this capacity of what we're dealing with tonight. So I, you know, I look at that and say, there is the township board, there's no doubt the township board's going to act on this. What they want to do with it and how they want to proceed, that's, that's their discretion, that's their pleasure. I think though that the planning commission, we are all residents of Groseal. We, we speak for our neighbors, we speak for our families, we speak for those that we meet up with on Macomb Street. I think we do provide a service. And so that service is to, to make sure that we do maintain what is good about Groseal. There's a reason why all of us have moved to Groseal. And, and again, just I guess focusing more on the consultant, the mere fact that the consultant was retained, the mere fact that the consultant put together a, a presentation of a master plan, again, there are some things that are very good in it, right? And I'm not going to disagree with that. But it's, it's our challenge to make sure that the plan is, is suited for the residents of Groseal and it's suited for, for looking forward over those next 10 years or, or longer. Some of these, some of the ideas in the plan, I think, provide almost a false narrative and it is almost like it's a cookie cutter. And I don't want Groseal to be a cookie cutter community. So, you know, I take a look at the survey that they provided in their report and I see something that says we need smaller lots and, and smaller houses. So at the last meeting I said, where's the analytic to that? Just show me the analytic. If that's, if that's the case, I'm more than happy to look at that and if that's the true analytic, then that's what should be in the master plan. There is no analytic. That's, that's, that's a conclusion. It's a conclusion based upon a planner proposing it. I don't need to agree with it, even though we paid $90,000 for the consultant to put together, if that doesn't suit what I believe is necessary for this island moving forward, I'm going to say I don't like that. I think it should be deleted. And that's my prerogative. I take a look at the survey that they put out and it's in the master plan as presented and, you know, the biggest issue that they provide is say, Groseal housing concerns. Nothing in that survey shows that someone wants smaller lots, smaller homes. The biggest concerns are the fact that there's cost of taxes and cost of utilities. I don't see that played out well in this master plan at all. They look at it something different. So I think, you know, I heard at the township board meeting and I heard it tonight, that because the planner put this together and they are the experts, we should run with that plan. I don't agree with that. I think that they're there as a consultant, they provide an opinion, it comes back to this planning commission, we give our opinions, modify it how we want, the board can do the very same thing. That's working hand-in-hand with the consultant. I've never been one that takes it as face value, this is it and we have to accept it. So the process that you proposed, no doubt, we've already spent another 35 minutes just talking about how the process will proceed, right? All of us have a vested interest in it. There's nothing irresponsible with our time or effort and if we can put our talent toward it and make it a better plan, I think that's a great thing.
Thank you, Kurt. As far as I'm concerned about this, consultants provide a valuable service. You know, they collect data, they analyze data and they present recommendations. And in that, that's good, but what they are not are decision makers. The consulting firm that we hired is not the decision maker for ultimately what goes in this master plan. Their coordinator, Ross, is not a decision maker. Ross was a facilitator who, who helped us to coordinate and pull things together so that we could get to the point where we are tonight. But that's not the same as being a decision maker. Decision makers reside at this table. The master plan is, is the plan for our community. The master plan is, is the plan for our community. And we are those representatives that make a judgment about what is in that document for the, for, for what a majority of us think this community ought to look to in the future. And so I have no problem, uh, critiquing, uh, what, what was presented and making sure that, uh, that it fits as best as, as, as I think it can. Now, the other side of this coin is, and it was, it was pretty obvious, as, as, as we went through the process of evaluating recommendations. You know, I, I, I looked at my recommendations, and then I compared them against what we ultimately ended up recommending, and there were significant differences. Okay? You can't, you can't approach this and say, you know, I expect to agree with 100% of what's there. It's not the way it works. Okay? You have to compromise. I think the expression, um, you know, the, the 80/20 rule comes into play. You know, I, I agree 80% with, uh, exactly for what, for what the, the recommendations actually are. I don't necessarily like the other 20, but that's fine. Okay? It's okay to, to not be 100% on board. Uh, but you, you need to kind of think that way to be able to move forward. So the bottom line is, for me, these consultants made recommendations, we make decisions. And we make decisions based on, 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 on the best judgment that we can for our community. So that's where I'm at on it. So, um, let's get back to the original motion, which was, uh, the methodology to, uh, to go through this, uh, by objective. Is there any further specific discussion on that prior to a vote? Okay, then I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Motion carried. So let's then go to, uh, the document that, uh, Ross prepared for us. On the screen, yeah, please. And Ross, I'm going to, I'm going to surprise you a bit on this. Uh, so be flexible with me, please.
Will do.
I want to start with the easiest stuff first. We're going to go to the bottom of the list, and we're going to just see how this process plays out. And so, so we get a feel for, for whether this is going to work or not work. So let's start off with, uh, uh, I, I think that is, is that the last one, Ross?
Yep. Q4.
Okay, Q4. Uh, let's see, are there page numbers on this, Ross?
On the left.
On the left.
Like page 26?
26? Oh, there we go.
Last page.
Last page.
Page.
Okay. This, this specific objective, provide resilient and quality public services and utilities to the community in a manner that protects the natural environment. Okay? Uh, the officers look down at the objectives that you see, and our results were okay as is on all. Are there any comments on any of these objectives anybody would like to make? Any of these action items they would like to make?
So if there's not, John, you want a motion to approve objective Q4? Is that the way you want to proceed?
That's correct.
All right, I'll make that motion to approve objective Q4, page 26 of 26.
There are second.
Second.
Second for Brian. Discussion. Call the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. By golly, we got one done.
Here we go.
How about that?
We're on a roll.
Wait a minute now.
All right, sorry.
All right, let's go, let's go to the next one. Okay, this is objective E4. Enhance the comfortable, attractive, human-scale environment of Macomb Street. What page is that, please? That is on page 25. Okay, got it. Now, okay. Okay, in this particular instance, uh, the, uh, recommendation from, from, uh, the executive officers was to accept it as is. Are there any questions or comments on either of these two objectives?
Make a motion to approve objective E4, page 25 of 26.
Motion to approve is their support. Support from Jay, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. Moving merrily along to page 24. Okay, uh, the objective, maintain a healthy mixture of uses along Macomb Street that contribute to the business district while meeting the retail and housing needs of residents. There were two action items on this. Uh, one was, um, approved as okay. The second was, uh, uh, to delete. Um, is there discussion on either or both of these two action items?
I have comments on A5.
Please. Three minutes?
Yep. So I understand that the motion is, uh, the recommendation is to delete, delete. I know there was comments about, you know, why wouldn't we, um, you know, that the single-family housing needs to be protected? And I was just saying, you, oh, I apologize, I might have said about, uh, non-conforming, and I just, I disagree. Uh, limit doesn't mean that all single-family residential would be non-conforming. And again, we need more density in this area and, which has limited space, and single-family residential, once built, will stay likely single-family residential into perpetuity. So it takes up much more space, um, you know, at least a half century or more. So again, we run into even less space, uh, to make those, you know, bigger buildings that are denser work. Thank you.
Uh, would you care to make a motion?
I, um, also have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Proceed.
I, I would, I would like, I would, I could be in favor of updating the language, but I do feel that deleting this, um, particular action item, um, puts the Macomb Street plan, uh, at, at, um, in a detrimental position based on the things that, uh, that are in their strategic plan. I also believe that the DDA has reviewed this. Um, and really to truly operate as a productive Main Street corridor, um, the goal is to encourage denser, lighter denser development. And that's, I think, the intent of that action item. Um, it reads, I think, to, uh, Mr. Kobelak's point a couple of months ago, might read a little bit negatively because we're, it's looking like we want to limit development or limit single-family homes. Um, I just think that when those opportunities come available around up and down Macomb Street within the DDA area, uh, it would be, uh, the best idea to encourage, uh, homes and, um, uh, multifamily homes or homes that are, uh, create a denser population, um, to contribute to that business corridor and that Main Street, um, strategic plan that we have in place with the DDA.
Okay, additional, thank you. Additional discussion?
John, just to couple that with what Angela's saying. Again, limit any new construction of single-family, you know, really what we want to do is we want to, we want to recommend mixed-use commercial and multifamily development along Macomb Street. Right? So that first sentence, their first part of the sentence is in the negative, but the second is trying to say we need more mixed-use commercial. But a good example is Mark Stanko took down a residential home. There's a residential home to the east of him. He put together something that was commercial on the first floor, then residential on the second floor, and then he's going to turn, you know, the property. I mean, so you could see that, that, that residential is not going to stay there forever. I mean, there's, there's ways to change it. But I think what you're trying to say in that paragraph is that we just want to, we want to encourage mixed-use commercial and multifamily development along Macomb Street at the end of the day, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, to me, not wordsmithing it, but that first part of it, if you remove it, then it seems like it makes, uh, it would satisfy the DDA and it would satisfy planning commission.
Okay, then, uh, would you make a motion, please, regarding the approval of objective E3? With the, with a lot of, are you, are you making a mo, I'm asking, are you making a motion to approve objective E3 with the change in the language, uh, as you described? Removing the, the proportion about limiting single-family, but instead focusing on the encouraging of the mixed use?
That would be my motion. Not, it's not a new motion, it's a friendly amendment. Right? Because we already have a motion to approve. No.
Oh, we don't have an emotion on this one yet.
Not yet. But that would be my motion, um, to approve objective E3 on page 24 of 26 with the understanding that we would, uh, modify A5 to read that, um, we would encourage, uh, mixed-use commercial and multifamily development along Macomb Street and remove, limit any new construction of single-family housing.
Okay, is there, is there a second?
I'll support.
Support from Angela. Additional discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, A2 does state encourage a mixture of commercial, office, and residential uses along Macomb Street.
Yeah, I just saw, I, but I saw the, so. But I saw the office component, I just thought that was,
We really mean it.
Yeah. I thought the office component was a different idea, but.
So I, I think that the intent, you know, it, the intent behind this wasn't to ban single-family construction. Maybe it was potentially making a special land use for single-family homes. It wouldn't, so as to not make them non-conforming.
Okay, well, we, we have, we have a motion on the floor at the moment. And it's seconded. Uh, do we, do we want to, uh, uh, is there a modification to that motion?
Uh, not from this end of the table.
Okay. Speaking for myself on this end of the table, I think that it is important to keep, you know, some form of that because again, like, if the land use, if the actual area is very rare, um, and we got the first part of that, it's like Ross had said, it's basically A2. Um, and we're not saying like how we're going to encourage it because like, it seems like this is like one of the threats. And I, I hate saying that word that way, but just looking at it, if you have, you know, only so much space available. We got one street, basically, in all of Groseal for, uh, you know, this mixed use. Everywhere else, a single family. You know, how can we, you know, like, maybe limit is the wrong word. Uh, maybe it's discourage or, you know, like, I'm, I'm open to interpretations, but I think that we need to keep that first part because it's important to say like how, again, you know, we're going to run out of spaces to make, uh, Macomb Street more walkable if we just have single-family residential. And I do understand where it has been said, like, there's good developments over there that have office on the first floor or other uses. That's great, that's mixed use. And like, that's what I'm talking about. Uh, I'm talking, you know, what I'm trying to discourage is just, you know, straight up, just a single-family house that it doesn't have much activity going on at all throughout the day. And again, like, there's many other places where that could happen. So if there's ways that we can limit or discourage or, you know, try to, I, I'm losing my, uh, creative thought as far as like the actual word. But I think maybe the, the issue is specifically limit or maybe the word any. So what if you just say, limit new construction on single-family housing along Macomb Street rather than limit any? Because like, any seems like it's more like, this has got to go. And I don't think that's what we're saying at all. I think, well, at least that's not what I'm saying at all. I think it's just that we don't want that to be majority of what develops in that corridor.
Okay, additional discussion on this? We have a motion on the floor, it's seconded.
I have a comment. Um, it, it, you know, I, I would be, you know, everybody would likes the idea of having a downtown. And I really, in my opinion, don't feel that single-family homes are very supportive of this downtown experience. Um, I think there's at least three people on this board that would, that would, that would be open to not having single-family homes. So I think ultimately, we're deciding to consider different, different ordinances later on in the process. I, I think it would be fine leaving it in here as limit, limiting it. And again, we'll add the words as consider it later on. And I think there's plenty of people on this board who would consider it.
Additional discussion?
I'd like to add a comment to what was just expressed. This township has need for revenue. And the main source of revenue for a township on the stuff that I have read is property tax. And the point that was made about single-family homes being less dense but doable elsewhere where the clustering and aggregating of this is only possible on Macomb has merit. Uh, looking at it that way, I can see that, that there's a bit of strength here in, in putting an emphasis on making it a bit more dense.
Thank you. Uh, I'll call the question at this point.
I'm sorry, uh, John.
Oh, Jay.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. Um, I, I, I mean, I'm hearing the arguments and, uh, I mean, the, the, the interesting thing about it is it's hard to imagine today somebody building a single-family home on Macomb Street. I can't remember the last time somebody built a,
Twice. And there's a third one coming on too.
There's one across from the bakery that just went up in the last year or so.
Or East River on that half.
Okay. Stankos are building another one, but anyways.
Okay. I'm going to drive down Macomb Street and try to figure out what I'm missing. I drive it all the time, you would think I would know this. Um, so I apologize for my, uh, error. But, um, look, I, I, I get the point. Density is what we're looking for in Macomb Street. It's success, it's, it adds to the success of the businesses and all that. Uh, I think limiting is the, uh, is the really concerning word there. I think, as I had said at the outset of this project, though, I think the word explore is the savior to it. Um, so if, if I think about the, you know, the, the, you know, import of the words, I could see going with, explore the possibility of discouraging new construction of single-family housing. Uh, I would support that. Um, I wouldn't support, uh, limit, knowing that it's a small distinction, but I, uh, I, you know, when I see limit, I think, okay, we're going to make them non-conforming uses and everything after that is, you know, the, the, um, you know, that doesn't mean they have to be torn down. We know that's not how this works, but it, you know, it kind of puts people in a position where they can't update their homes significantly. Certain things are restricted, uh, and I don't think we want to do that, but there may be some things we could do. I think Ross threw out a possibility like making it, um, you know, special land use or, you know, something like that, uh, that, look, we may decide as a commission down the road, you know, revisit this, consider it, and decide not to do it. Um, but I'd be okay with, um, uh, uh, changing it to explore the possibility of discouraging new construction. So speaking for myself.
Okay, additional discussion. Call the question, uh, on the motion as,
Can I make a, can I make a motion?
We already have a motion and it's supported.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, sir. Uh, I believe that the, the motion that was set before was about just removing, uh, the first part of that, so that way it was only,
That's the motion we're voting on.
Okay. So that's what we're voting on at the moment? Okay.
Unless there's, unless there's a modification to that, that's what we're voting on.
I was going to say, then can we make a friendly amendment or whatever Eric suggested earlier, is that what it's called?
It's, it's, it's accepted by the motion.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
My thought is just run this vote, see what happens, and then if there's a, a secondary vote.
Uh, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to run the vote and it's a roll call. Kurt?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Angela?
No.
Jay?
No.
John, yes?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Four to four.
It fails then.
Motion, motion fails.
Fails.
Okay, uh, is there any other motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to keep A5 as is.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Discussion. Hearing none, call the question. Eric?
No.
Jay?
No.
Angela?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kurt?
No.
John, no? Dan?
Yes.
Bill?
No. There are going to be four to four again?
Motion, the motion fails, five to three.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I propose, uh, you know, amended language?
Please.
Uh, explore methods for discouraging new construction of single-family housing along Macomb Street in favor of mixed-use commercial and multifamily development and, uh, striking along Macomb Street if we've already, uh, said it earlier.
Say that one more time, please.
Sorry, um, explore methods for discouraging new construction of single-family housing along Macomb Street in favor of mixed-use, commercial, and multifamily development.
Everybody got that? Is there a second? Support?
Give it to Dan.
Dan? It was your support?
Yes.
Okay, discussion.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, I think the intent is to try to win over one more vote here, uh, which might be mine. Uh, so if I could suggest that it be, um, changed slightly, um, requesting a friendly amendment to explore the possibility of discouraging new construction. Just not a huge change.
Discouraging you,
Or the possibility of discouraging, as opposed to explore discouraging.
Of, of single-family though?
Yes.
Are we taking away the two words limit and any and, and coming up with something else that will work, is it?
Yes. That's, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay, let's read the motion. Okay, we have a proposed friendly amendment. Is that friendly amendment clear and do you accept it? Who, who made the motion? Brian?
Brian.
I mean, it was clear to me because I was saying that we were exploring methods, which is, you know, I believe what the intent of what Jay was saying over there. It just, to me, it's, it read a little clearer to say, you know, explore methods for discouraging construction.
Yes or no, please?
Yes.
Friendly amendment accepted. Dan? Friendly amendment accepted or not?
Yes.
Additional, so now, let's read the statement as, as now it is being voted on. Jay?
Explore the possibility of discouraging new construction of single-family housing along McComb Street. And then the rest stays as-is.
Okay. Additional discussion.
I, I believe that was incorrect from what I said.
I'm sorry?
I, I thought it was explore methods for discouraging new construction of single-family housing along McComb Street in favor of mixed-use, commercial, multifamily.
I thought you accepted the friendly amendment request.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I mean, I, I feel like, you know, saying methods is like, to me, like, a little more clear that we're actually gonna look into this as opposed to just saying, explore the possibility. To me, that's like, eh, we might get it, we might not do it. You know, like, it's kind of like we're really wishy-washy on it. And I feel like to say that we're gonna look at the methods and see if they, they, one of these works is, you know, a little more action-oriented. So that's why I'm pretty strong on that language.
Okay, so you're not accepting the friendly amendment?
Yeah, I apologize for that.
Okay. All right, then I'll, I'll call a question on the motion. And we'll vote. Eric?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jay?
No.
Angela?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kurt?
No.
John, no. Five votes to three, the motion passes, the language is changed. So Objective 3 is complete as modified. Will you please make sure that that wording is, is changed accordingly? Okay. All right, let's take, let's take a minute. Is this, is this? This is the process that we're going through. Is this, is this still okay for everybody? So far, we've, we've managed three. All right, let's move forward. We're to Objective E2, which is on page 22. Identify and reduce regulatory impediments to desired economic development on McComb Street. The objective as written was okay. There were, the recommendations from the executive committee were to delete A1, delete A3, modify A6A and A6B. And finally, delete, no, I'm sorry, that's it. Everything else, and that was okay as-is. So we have four potential changes out of eight. Eight? Yeah, I think. Okay, is there, just, without going through each of these, which I won't, let's, let's have a discussion on this.
So, one thing I noticed was that with A1, the, the reason for deleting was saying that by right is dangerous and that there was areas of single-family homes that needed to be protected, specifically, you know, citing Gray's Drive. But yet, later on, in D, it says, consider if Gray's Drive should remain as part of the McComb Street District. So I feel like if we're doing D to see like if it should remain part of the McComb Street District and we say that it doesn't, then that makes it more likely that you could do by right within, you know, the proper McComb Street District. Because that's an area that is, you know, like, anyone that builds a home along McComb Street should be understanding like what McComb Street is, what it's, you know, what's being built and that it is this walkable area. And so, I feel like they're kind of knowing like what the type of uses would be within a downtown area.
Additional discussion? I have a comment. There have been occasions here where the homes on McComb Street, and they're there first, have, have every right to have their, their, their privacy and their property integrity protected. And it's come up in front of this commission, and this commission has, has made adjustments to potential developments accordingly to make sure that that was the case. And I think that should continue. It, it has not only to do with Gray's Drive, it has everything to do with all the homes, the private homes that people have on, on McComb Street. That's my comment.
Can I just add to that? I mean, just by right, I mean, this, this planning commission has seen many planning commissioners before working on making sure that planning happens on Grove Seal. I know this is McComb District, I know that we're trying to figure out a way to redevelop it. I mean, I was the chairman of the DDA. That's what you want. But as, you know, by right, I'm not gonna, myself, I'm not gonna prove anything that's by right.
I, I agree. I mean, a prime example of this is the senior housing unit, right? I mean, it's a 50-plus unit housing, it's one of the bigger buildings in the township, and you barely even know it's there. And that's because this planning commission did a lot of work to make sure that that thing was, was nestled in appropriately so that it fits in with its surroundings. So by right, would have just let those guys put in and they, it was gonna be right on the, you know, almost roadside with, you know, big air conditioning units out the front of it. It was, it was a mess. So I, I, I agree with Kurt on that one.
And Eric, just to add to that.
Worked well.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, John. You know, CVS is another good example, right? They were not there, the planning commission worked with them. We figured out a way to get their parking. You can see their parking is not as big as it should be or could be. But we worked with them to do it so that the businesses on both sides were not impacted. Plus, we wanted to have a CVS on Grove Seal. So by right, they would have done what they wanted to do. And what you see there is based upon a lot of involvement by the planner, community development office, and the planning commission.
Additional comment?
Help me understand this, this by right. Because I'm looking at this and thinking, number one, these are exactly the types of uses that we want to encourage along McComb Street and in the DDA and in the downtown area, number one. Number two, while I can respect what you're saying, Mr. Schweickert, about, you know, the homes and homeowners, we also have a responsibility to the property owners in general, the business owners. It's a mixed-use district. And most people would be encouraged by living in an active downtown area if they're looking to purchase in a business district. So I think that, you know, should go hand in hand. But help me understand the difference between by right. I don't think that they would be able to come in and just do anything. I mean, they would still have to come in front of us. We would still have standards and ordinances and rules and things in place. They would still have to come through and step by step, just like a homeowner would. Yet we're okay with the homeowner being allowed uses by right throughout this plan. So what's the difference? Just help me understand, I'm, I'm honestly asking.
Brian, define by right.
I, I understand what by right is, but why is it so threatening for a business property or property owner versus a homeowner and using similar language?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
All throughout this plan, it said, there's a few areas where we've addressed by right. It's not in this section specifically, but for homeowners. So in a mixed-use downtown area, why is it okay for us to, to decide that the homeowners have more rights than the property owners where the businesses lie? It is in a mixed-use district, they should all have the same rights in terms of how to use their property. And they would all still walk through a process. It's not like they would just, we would wake up one morning and there would be, you know, a McDonald's on the corner. I mean, they all still have to go through a huge amount of process, especially here. So I guess I'm not, I don't understand the threat, the feeling of the threat behind this. And again, this fits right in with the DDA master plan that was approved and has been in existence for a couple of years now, right? I mean, I don't know if all of these are specifically addressed, but it, it fits right in there.
To add on to Angela's comments, again, I think that, you know, again, like, those are the types of things that we want to encourage. And so if we're trying to encourage those, but like, they have to have special land use, but single-family doesn't. And, you know, again, like, we're even considering, oh, should we even limit single-family? It's just, it's so much easier to develop single-family and that purpose. So it's like, we gotta figure out ways to make it easier to develop these type of, you know, you know, land uses. But to be able to do it in a way that, you know, fits with Grove Seal and, you know, has that intent. And I feel like you can use form-based code or you can use your regulations on, on, you know, just like parking in general. There's all sorts of things that, you know, Angela had already talked about that would be able, that would still be there, even if these things were allowed by right. And again, like with the, the resident, the senior living, yeah, you, you don't know that it's there. But also, like, there's a big, long driveway and there's, you know, parking like in the front and like some of these areas. And so it's, it's not, you, you don't know it's there, but it's also kind of a deactivated space. So again, like, we're trying to figure out how to activate the sidewalks, the, the roads, and create those, those public places within the McComb Street District.
Additional comments?
I have a comment. I, I, you know, I definitely understand, you know, how I would make it a little bit, basically by having it by right, correct me if I'm wrong, but eliminates the public hearing, you know, where we have people coming there where, where it's not appro, where it's not approved in a public hearing, you know? One example I can think of where, where it would, where it'd be useful to not have it by right. Say, say someone wants to put a movie theater in downtown and it borders, you know, eight residence, eight single-family homes, which that's, that's possible on McComb because, because it faces, because, you know, businesses could back up to single-family homes on Gray's also, you know? And, and we have, you know, all eight residents and many other residents here in a public hearing. I, I can see that as one example where we may want, may want to not approve that use. Although I do think it's rare, I, I do think something like that's pretty rare too. You know, I, I understand from the other direction too, of just by right. But again, the only thing we're doing is eliminating the public hearing. We're eliminating once, if we were to say, you know, no, we want, we want, you know, or, yeah, we want to have these by right. Essentially, we're eliminating the public hearing.
I'll give you a real example. Those of you who are around when, what was the Chinese restaurant? Prior to that being a Chinese restaurant, it was a, a center that was part of the recreation department. And it was a teen hangout. Teens came in from all over the place and it was, caused a lot of police problems. Beyond that, the cooking that was going on in the kitchen was sending fumes up and, and, and blanketing the, the house next to it. Okay? So you say entertainment, you, you say this, and you, you don't know, you don't know what the implications are until you see the application. If you can't evaluate it and judge it against reasonable standards, you hurt property owners that are there. And so I'm against that. Next, any additional comments? And we have a motion.
I, I think I'd like to, to support, this idea has been recently expressed. It seems that we're not talking about exactly what is done, but how it is done. And by deleting this, the by right is the term I'm trying to speak to. It seems that that makes things easier to accomplish. But at the same time, it, it costs us in a way as a community, a, a check on, on what the process would be and whether things were properly organized. I, I'm ill at ease with removing that check. I, I, I think that, as I understand, by right, I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay, additional discussion?
Yeah, if I could just add one thing, I think we have been, this commission has been very good. I'll pat ourselves on the back for when people have something that is not, we don't expect much pushback or any concerns over it. It's a pretty clean, you know, whether it's McComb Street or here in the airport. You know, we, we combined the master, or, I'm sorry, the special land use and the, and the site plan approval into one meeting. You know, kind of grease things along pretty quickly. So I don't see it as a huge burden to have to do that. And, you know, I think it, what it does is, as, as Bill said, it eliminates a check there on something that might be objectionable that we can't imagine at this point. And everybody will look at us and say, how, how'd you let that happen? So, that explains my vote.
Entertainer motion, please, on Objective E2.
One quick question again, I just want to understand. Only thing that's changing as far as with the by right is just the public hearing. Everything else as far as, you know, review standards is the same. Is that what you're cor, is that what you're saying?
No. Brian, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the distinction between permitted by right and special land use is more than just the public hearing. It's a separate review. You'll recall, we've had one not that, not that long ago. Special land use requires its own review, its own findings based on the set standards in your ordinance. It also brings the board into play. Planning commission's a recommending body for special land uses. So, process is a little bit different, review standards are a little bit different. The site plan review component remains the same. So a by right use would still have to go through site plan review. And if it were an undeveloped property, if it were a new development or a larger development, it would have to come to planning commission anyway, just for site plan review. But the inclusion of special use does add, it's more than just a public hearing. There, there's more to it.
But I think it's important, it's, it's ultimately another meeting where, where this, where this board gives approval to. You know, and if you were to say by right, it essentially eliminates that meeting and all the details with it, is what you're accomplishing.
I will entertain a motion, please, on Objective E2.
I move to approve as, as submitted by the subcommittee.
We have a motion to approve Objective E2 as submitted. Motion by Ranka, support by Kobalak. Additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. Bill?
I'm in favor of that.
Dan?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Angela?
No.
Brian?
No.
Kurt?
Yes.
John, yes. Six votes to two, Objective E2 is approved.
I'll make a motion, I'm sorry.
Wait, are we, so all of E2 was just approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we're now to Objective E1. Implement supports for new and future businesses to create a thriving local economy.
Make a motion to approve Objective E1.
Page 21.
21 of 26.
We have a motion to approve as submitted, is there discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
We have to support.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'll support, yeah.
Yeah, Eric supports, Eric, somebody supported.
That's fine, give us Eric.
Eric, call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, Objective E1 is approved as submitted. Okay. Objective H6, encourage the stewardship of natural features as a key part of quality neighborhoods. There were two action items involved in this. The recommendations from the executive committee were to delete both. Discussion.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve Objective H6 as presented, page 20 to 26.
We have a motion on, on the floor, is there support?
Support.
Support from?
Bill.
Bill? Discussion.
Yeah, under A2, there was a potential change to consider revising R1E open space development ordinance. And, you know, I would support that, so that way we still have the A2 motion in there as opposed to completely deleting it. And I, I still don't understand why we'd be deleting about the, you know, the rezoning for permanent conservation districts because it just seems like logical to be able to do that. And I don't understand the reasoning by saying that we, we can't do it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, that was my comment that I meant to delete. I was, I made comments and that was, I meant to delete that.
What, potential change was your comment?
Yeah, and I.
I didn't remember that.
Yeah, on my presentation here, I have township staff comment for if there was a discussion where my input would be solicited, that meant to be deleted. So I, my apologies.
Okay, no problem. All right, so additional discussion?
I, I would, I think, echo a bit of what Brian is expressing. I don't, again, I don't, I don't see the threat behind considering rezoning residential land. I don't understand why we would delete that and not want to be explicit. I know in the Smith Group comments, they added that, you know, they were speaking more specifically about wetlands and. specifically about wetlands in certain areas that, you know, could be rezoned, you know, as, just for permanent conservation and things of that nature. So I think it, to me, this just seems like it's cleaning up our processes and our documentation and understanding more of our land use and property that's on the island. So I don't, I don't see any reason to delete it. I would consider looking at the second at A two when we discuss R one E. So depending on how we adapt R one E, I, I don't want to lose that point. So if we're, if we're pulling that into the R one E discussion and assessment, that would be important for me.
Okay. Additional discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll address the, some of the thinking, at least where I was as we were making the recommendations. You know, I think when, when we look at adopting the cluster residential development, so A two, we already have that as part of R one E. Angela, if I hear what you're saying, it's just a matter of when we, if and when we revisit R one E, make sure we don't lose that?
Yes.
Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yep, yep. That's exactly what I'm saying.
And I, you know, that sounds fine, although I'm not, not sure how we say that, when we, because it's already adopted. So consider adopting cluster residential development. I'm not sure how we would wordsmith that to say.
I think, I think, I, if I'm thinking like a planner, which I'm not, I think they likely added this in so that we wouldn't lose that point because we are addressing, they recommended that we reassess R one E. So there, I think their assumption is that that could be lost, so now it's documented here so that we do address it and we don't lose it in the process. I think that's probably just like checks and balances, that's the way I read it. So I, you know, and like you said, if we, I don't want to lose that. So if that means we keep this here with an added comment in terms of, you know, consider when we reassess R one E or if we connect it somehow to that step or that action.
Additional discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve objective H six as submitted. I'll call a question, all in favor, signify, well, all in favor, I'm sorry, voice vote. Eric?
Aye.
Dan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Angela?
No.
Brian?
No.
Kurt?
Yes.
John, yes. Six votes to two. Objective H six is approved as, as recommended. Okay, guys, it's eight thirty, we've been at this for a while now. I'd like to entertain a five-minute break.
Fun.
Five-minute break. We will now reconvene. And that moves us now to page nineteen. It's objective H three, promote and streamline desired residential development missing or underprovided in the market. The recommendations for, from the executive committee, there were four of seven items that were proposed to be changed. Comments? Open up the floor for comments.
I want to make a motion to approve objective H three, page nineteen of twenty-six.
We have a motion to approve as submitted, is there support?
Support.
Support from Eric, discussion.
Yeah, I have a comment on A two. I know that, looking to delete that. And as I understand it, maybe I'm not understanding it correctly, but like with the Michigan Municipal League or MML, ADU pattern book, you know, it's just something that would show examples of things that we like, to be able to, again, communicate what are the types of things that we would like to see as far as developments. So not to say like, oh, you know, we have to, we're approving something that is, again, like you build this, you get, you know, it's a rubber stamp, but more just ideas and like ways that we would like this, potential examples of like how development could go.
Would you like to make a motion on that?
I mean, I guess the motion would be to keep A two.
Okay, you have to make a motion. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we have a motion already on the floor. I'm sorry, I can't.
And the reason why, I mean, I believe it should be deleted is it's, it's adopting the MML and the ADU pattern book to streamline the development. I just, I don't think we should adopt it. I think, again, I don't think there's anything wrong to say that Grozeal is unique. We have a good planner, we have a good community development office. I don't, I don't like the idea of adopting a plan that, that's done in that nature.
Additional discussion?
I, I, I can see a benefit to having a pattern book available in specific areas of Grozeal. So I, you know, I definitely on Macomb, since Rethel's not here, I'll speak out and say in the, his, his beloved, you know, district. I think there's likely, you know, I can think of some maybe future examples, too. So I would hate to throw this one out completely. I don't know if we could consider amending the language so that it doesn't feel like it's as specific as adopting, but, you know, and I-
Yeah, part, part of the thinking, I was on the subcommittee with this was, and you guys can correct me, right, is, is you can always adopt the pattern book, right? But now this is a pretty specific pattern book and then if we don't do it right now, we're, you know, in my opinion, a little bit liable. And certainly, it's, if, you know, DDA comes back and says, look, we want you to do this, or the airport authority comes back and says, look, here's a pattern book we like, can you consider this one? There's nothing, there's no reason that we can't do that, the Planning Commission. And that's why this whole master plan, it's like there's, like this doesn't tell us what we can't do, it just tells us what we have to do, right? Or more specifically, it tells an outside person what Grozeal has to do, which is my bigger concern.
I guess my confusion is it just says consider, and so like it's not telling us what we have to do, it's just, you know, consideration. Like Angela was saying, that, you know, maybe there's a way to say like just different pattern books or plans rather than specifically highlighting MML and ADU, because again, I don't know that one specifically, so I'm not like, you know, a cheerleader specifically for that, but I, like Angela was saying, I feel like there's good intent behind it and I'd like to, you know, keep that as opposed to just completely deleting it.
Yeah, I weigh in on this one. I, I'll speak for myself only. I am intrigued but skeptical of the whole ADU idea. I think there are limited situations where it works and works well, but I think we need to keep a pretty tight rein on, on any ADUs, you know, to make sure that they are for the things that we say they are, right? Granny loft or whatever the term is, but the, you know, it's intended for immediate family members or, you know, even closely extended family members, you know, that sort of thing, and not as a rental unit, not as a, you know, like complete family units, you know, live, two people living on, you know, two whole families living on, in one lot, you know, that sort of thing. I think that's the sort of thing I think we would need to restrict. And so, you know, by, by streamlining their development, I, it appears to me that we're making it a little too easy to, to not retain those restrictions or at least the possibility of restricting. And the pattern book, I didn't pull it up, but, you know, my, my sense is that these things are, are unique to the circumstances and the, and the place where they are, you know, our accessory dwelling units, or not accessory dwelling, just accessory, what do we call them, structures? You know, garages or sheds or things like that. I mean, we have restrictions currently that say they, they match the, you know, should generally match the construction of the primary, you know, structure. Losing the wording. But the, the point is that, you know, if we adopt a pattern book, you know, that may not look anything like the, the, the building that it's, that it's accessory to.
A question, do, are, do we allow accessory dwelling units in any, any districts currently?
No.
So I think this is like one of several examples where we're looking for design standards and examples for something that we currently don't permit, you know? I, I feel like we're, we're getting ahead of ourselves on this stuff, you know, you know, ultimately, these items, we're asking, the, the township's going to hire another consultant to bring these items to them. So I think that this, to spend money on something like this to bring more standards to us when there's not even an area you can do this currently, you know, I, I think is getting ahead of ourselves. And I, I'm just bringing this up as, this isn't the only case of this, there are several cases throughout here where we're discussing bringing standards for, you know, bringing standards, adding standards when there's currently no area to build these, to build these type items.
Just a little rebuttal to that. I just mentioned that I know the objective H one, which will be coming up, you know, that is written before, is about expanding housing choices. And so like, I think this is like related to that. So it's like, if you're able to expand housing choices and allow, I believe granny flats was the vernacular for that type of accessory dwelling unit. But if you allow accessory dwelling units, okay, you know, how can you fast track that? And like, again, make the process easier for everyone. And so if you can, you know, demonstrate the ways that you do like it visually, I think that's helpful. And that's why I think that, you know, we should, you know, keep this in some capacity.
Again, it gets back to my original motion.
Additional discussion?
I believe it was Eric that had said that, well, you know, there could be other pattern books that come out. So like, you know, the, the airport could develop their own or other, you know, different districts could, you know, develop their own pattern books. And so that's where I was going, like, well, maybe you strike MML from that and just say, you know, consider adopting, you know, pattern, you know, future pattern books or something like that, where it's, it's generic enough that we're not- Where it's, it's generic enough that we're not subscribing to anything, but it is a prompt for us to look at that in the future, to see like, hey, can we fast track a process? Especially if we do, you know, approve of accessory dwelling units.
Additional discussion?
I like that suggestion. It's not striking it completely, it's leaving that option open to be considered. It's not, you know, specifically saying, let's adopt it, it's saying, let's consider adopting it. But I, I would, I think that's favorable to suggest, consider adopting pattern book building plans to streamline development in desired residential areas. And just moreover, like I mentioned in my first comment, we could even be more specific in terms of the residential areas that we could see that as a fit. That would be my suggestion.
Additional discussion? I'll call a question.
What is the question before us?
The, the motion is to adopt H, Objective H3 as presented, with the, with the four items as shown. And it was motion by Kobolak and support by Ranka, I think. So I'll call a question. Jay?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Kurt?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
John, yes. Motion carries, seven to one. Objective H3 is complete.
Only two to go.
Make a mo, no, sorry, John, go ahead. You want to introduce it?
Okay, Objective H2.
Make a motion to approve Objective H2 as presented, page eighteen of twenty-six.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion in support. I'll read the objective, attract new residents and families maintaining a welcoming community. We have a motion in support, discussion. Hearing none, I'll call a question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, Objective H2 is complete.
Yeah.
That's for sure. Okay, that takes us to Objective H1, which the Planning Commission at the last meeting revised the objective to read, maintain housing choices to make GrosZil Township a desirable place to live for current and future residents. So that, that objective change has already been adopted by the previous, at the previous meetings. There are multiple action items here. Many are revised. Let's begin the discussion.
I know the objective itself was ratified the last meeting, but I still do disagree with the word "maintain," because again, it basically says status quo is good enough. And we know that, you know, we are missing different types of housing options, either because it's not in the zoning code at all allowing it, or we just simply don't have those developments. So I feel strongly about like, having the word expand in there. And then related to that with A1, the changes as presented, it doesn't include anything about the housing shortage for middle housing, which again, is a problem nationwide, but you know, especially in suburban areas. And then, you know, other things like A6, about, you know, architectural design guidelines, again, like, these are features we talk about all the time, well, as part of site plan reviews and special land use and stuff. So again, I feel like more communication is helpful in order to show like, what we want, rather than just complaining about, you know, what's before us and saying that's not good enough. Regarding the modular homes, I believe you're saying that was already in our code, but I didn't know exactly where that was, so it's like, I want to make sure that it is allowed to be able to use the modular home design for traditional single-family housing. Okay, thank you. And again, about the item C, consider revising Combe Street zoning to, District to permit, permit attached housing choices beyond townhouses, such as duplexes, triplexes, quads, and apartments. Again, this is part of that middle housing, and, you know, shouldn't we have a way to be able to communicate, like, the way that we would like those things to be, you know, put in the Combe Street District, rather than, you know, just, you know, relying solely on a special land use? Believe that's it.
Thank you, Brian. Additional discussion?
I just want to make, let me point out that A10C is one where consider revising, those, and the reason we're deleting those is because those choices are already in, they're already allowed in Combe Street District. There's, there's nothing, I, I don't understand anything being added there. They're all, it's already, it's already in the ordinances. They're all permitted.
Additional discussion?
Well, just to move it forward, I guess I'll make a motion to approve Objective H1 as presented, page fourteen of twenty-six.
I think we did that, didn't we?
We did not.
No.
Okay, sorry. So please restate it again?
Motion to approve Objective H1 as presented, page fourteen of, well, actually, page fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, and seventeen, and, yep, seventeen of twenty-six.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there support?
Support.
Support from?
Bill.
Okay, call a question. Eric?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Angela?
No.
Brian?
No.
Kurt?
Yes.
John, yes. The motion carries. We have now moved through all of the objectives and action items for the evening. Thank you very much, everybody, for the well-thought comments, and for keeping those comments as we, as we targeted for short periods. I'd like to move now to the next step in this. Now that the, the action items have been, have been clarified, we, our, our next challenge is that we need to make sure that the text of the master plan document itself aligns with the objectives as the, as the Planning Commission has approved this evening. And that was something that was discussed at, I don't know whether it was the January, the December meeting, one or the other, but we felt very strongly that it ought to be aligned. Now, when the, when the executives were getting together, we felt that we ought to follow a similar approach to what we have done with the action items. Basically, you know, rather than passing this back to Ross, and saying, Ross, modify it, and having him work on it, going back and forth and back and forth, that, that we ought to instead be more efficient at it, let the officers redline a document, okay? And, and, and bring either the redlined document back to the commission for your review and approval, if you so desire, or simply delegate to the officers the, the option to align and edit as required, and present at the next meeting a, a document, a final document for your review, without the red lines, plus including the modified action items. You know, so it's, it's a complete document that we could, that we could now potentially hold a public hearing on. If we go the redline approach, there will be an additional meeting that we require. Because when we bring this forward as, at the last, the last stage, we have to have a public hearing again. Okay? So, and that is a decision that the commission needs to make. What, what is your choice? Do you, the options are, do you want to see, first of all, three choices. Do you want the officers to, to assume responsibility for draft editing? That's a yes or a no. Once we have done that, do you wish to see it as a redline document in a meeting? Or do you wish to see it as a finished, without redline document, you know, that we would then incorporate in the next meeting, which will be a public hearing? Those are the choices.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to be clear, right? So I think what worked out this last time, maybe not perfectly, but I think it made it get through a lot easier, is we did get comments from everybody on what was good, bad, and different. And we could see that, right? And I, I think it changed a lot of our thinking as we were going through it. And I'd just like to make sure that that step doesn't get lost. Right? Because I know, even if you follow our, you follow our recommendations between the first meeting and the second meeting, you could see that there was substantial movement after we got more feedback as well.
Sure. Okay, so you're, so are you saying that we would issue the, issue the redline document to commissioners for feedback? Written feedback? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think we want, written, I think we want, well, either, either we, everyone, just like we did this time, everyone sends their feedback and we go through all at once, right? Or we redline it and then get feedback. The way this one worked, I liked it, although it's going to be a lot more difficult for the Subcommittee this time, is everyone puts their, their input in.
Yeah, the difficulty, the difficulty with, with, it's a hundred and twenty pages long.
It is more difficult.
That's why we rather you three do it before we do it. But then you can redline it, and then send it back to us, and then we can provide comments after the redline. Right?
Yeah, if I might suggest, if there are, you know, instead of everybody, you know, creating their own redline, and having to merge, you know, seven or eight of them together, at least go through them, and if they're big ticket, big picture things, I'd love this, I don't want it changed, or I hate this, you know, that sort of thing. I think that sort of feedback would be helpful.
Yeah, because you're going to, the three of you are going to knock out, let's say, seventy-five percent of those items, and we're going to probably agree with the redlining. It's the twenty-five percent that we need to debate and to discuss.
All right, so the, what I'm, what I'm hearing for a process is, is the officers will, will redline the, the text of the master plan. We will submit it to the commission, and everybody takes a look at it, and as, as Kurt indicated, pick out those things that, that you want to, want to comment on, put them in there somewhere, so that, that we, when we get together again, as an executive committee, we can, we can assess those opinions that we see, to make modifications. Does, does that approach work?
I think on a hundred and twenty-page document, that's the easiest way to streamline it, the review.
Okay, the, then the next thing is, is when, when we have received that, and we've incorporated people's thoughts in the editing, how do you want you to see the, the next document? Do you want to see it with, still the red lines in place as modified? Do you want to see it as a completed document without red lines?
I think, I think you should have red lines.
What's that?
I think you should have the red lines.
I would concur with that. It gives you a reminder of what the position was formerly.
So then, then at the next meeting, what the officers will, officers will provide will be the edited, or the redline document as modified with the input that, that you all have presented to us. And we'll have incorporated it, or modified it, or adjusted it, or whatever. So you'll see the final redline document, as it would then be converted into eventually, at the following meeting, the public hearing.
That works.
Saying the same thing?
Yeah, that works. That works.
Just one question. I, I'm not su, I want to make sure I understand. I think the purview was that based on what we've removed here today by the votes, then you're going through the master plan document, finding the text and removing that, so you kind of have lenses on.
Not necessarily removing it.
As opposed to, well, like, redlining it.
Adjust, you know, make, making-
Yeah. So it's like, you won't be going and like, removing anything else that doesn't, you know, handle like, for the purview of like, what we agreed upon here today.
We would not, we would not negate anything which, which compromises the action items which we approved tonight. Now, there may be areas that we choose to supplement, okay? And that's, that's, that's a different story. Obviously, we'll do things like, there's, there's, you know, where the wrong words are in there, okay? There's, there's actual factual errors, okay? Things that are, you know, spelling, there, there's stuff like that, all of which is going to get, you know, we, we're going to work on. But, you know, if we see something, if we see something that we think needs to be expanded on a little bit further, we will. But we will not, we will not delete anything which, which supports the recommendations that we've approved tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
And with, with the red line, so it's easy to, it's easy to look.
Easy for people to see.
That's right.
Okay, so.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
Related to the red lines, will there be like, a little like, context or justification as to like, why that might be removed? So it says like, oh, you know, this is being removed based on, you know, H1, that we already said that we're deleting that one, item. Just so that way there's context, as opposed to saying, why is this part deleted?
Okay, we'll, we'll have to talk about that. The way, the way we were redlining was not using the actual software, you know, it's a software track, track changes?
Mm-hmm.
Is it got, it, it's, it's a, it's a difficult thing, it's a difficult, at least it's a difficult thing for us to use.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we were doing was simply highlighting a red error, like, taking out a word, put, make it red, and then put the next word next to it that we're writing in, yellow. You know, something like that.
Yeah.
So you actually see both right there, without all the crossouts and other things that are in, in tracking.
Okay.
We're tracking.
That's good, but that just makes it a lot more difficult for you to create the clean, because you can just click accept and track changes.
The, the formatting of, of what we got for Word-
Oh, okay.
Has, because there's pictures in there and all that, everything's kind of jumps around.
Got it, okay.
And by the way, that-
Deleting pages at a time, when you delete a sentence, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, that's another thing I should point out. The redline, the redline document, you know, we're going to have, we're going to have to take out some of the pictures. In other words, just to get through this. Because as Jay says, it, it, everything's moving around. When you start changing a word here, and they've put so many pictures in the thing that, that it gets, if the formatting gets, we spend more time screwing around with, with word pictures than we do with working with the words.
Yeah.
So when you get it, okay, as a redline, you will not see some of the pictures that are in there. But when you approve the document, it'll go back to Ross, and he'll have to figure out how to get all the pictures back in again.
Okay.
Lucky you, accepting.
And so we're, we're just doing it for the purposes of not spending our time playing around with Word.
Yeah.
And then, Brian, I think, to, to address your, your last question, I think, what, what would make sense, consistent with what we did, with the, the changes we made to the, to the objectives or the action items, is, if it's obvious what, there are the reasons something's being deleted, then there's no reason to go in and say, hey, this is obvious.
Like a spelling thing that's totally obvious.
Right. If, if it's something that may not be clear, then, consistent with what we did there, you know, add a sentence that explains why.
Thank you.
And, and if it's not clear, you know, obviously, you can ask.
Just one other idea. I know that you're trying to like, figure out how to do it without doing Word, and like, you might be able to just use a PDF, and just like, you know, do a line strike through the text over there, and then just hit a comment, and be able to type the, you know, the sentence that you did want in there. Or provide context of like, why you deleted it. I've used, you know, I edit PDFs that way all the time. That's actually how I was doing, tracked a lot of my changes, like, from, that we're talking about here tonight. So just another option that you might want to consider.
Well, thank you for the suggestion. We'll see if we can, we need to find the easiest way, for sure. Okay, so we've been through the, the four action items. I'd like to see if there's any public comment specifically about what we've accomplished here this evening with the master plan. Any comments that anybody wants to share? Hi, Kyle.
Hey, everyone. So, I mean, I'll just say, at the beginning, I liked where you all were going, it felt like you all were listening to each other, trying to find a way forward, and then as you got towards the end, it was just kind of like six, two votes to, to get things done. I've spoken to a lot of you, as many of you is, are willing to speak to me. I think you all know where I'm at on a lot of this. I'll, I'll try to be brief. Twenty years ago, when a master plan like this was implemented, you did, you did a lot of things right, I think you did. Open space, I've mentioned many times, that was the right call then, still the right call now. Another thing that you did back then was, was limit housing. That might have been the right call then, I don't think it's the right call now. And a lot of the actions you took today was to limit housing and development in, on land that's already developable and, and done. So I'm disappointed in that. A lot of, there was a lot to talk about maintaining, maintaining what GrosZil has. If this Planning Commission wants to take credit for CVS, and the Senior Housing Center, and, and things like that, they've also got to take credit for things on Combe Street that aren't there anymore. The Taliesin's has been sitting there for ten years, empty. A lot of other storefronts that are empty. That's not maintaining GrosZil, that's letting GrosZil decay, very, very bluntly. And I have concerns that that's going to continue to happen if we don't leave options open that you all are closing with the action items that you're deleting today. open that you all are closing with the action items that you're deleting today. I, I would push my perspective more, but more important than my perspective, I believe, is some, some real failures in getting public commentary in this specific process that you all took. I can list a lot of them. The main, one of the big ones I do want to name is, in the document out there publicly right now, there's mention of a further housing assessment that will be coming. I will take responsibility for this. I was not present in a meeting that I should have been present in where the housing assessment was taken out. But I don't believe that that should be taken away in a private meeting. That housing assessment, while I don't agree with all of it, is something the public paid for, the public should be able to see and be able to comment on, and gets to a lot of the central things that you all are working on. So again, I think that should be out there in the public. If you all want to strike it from the master plan, do it in a public vote so the public can see it. I would encourage you all to adopt what the township board adopts. There's public comments in the beginning and in the end of the meeting. So if anyone in the public, if I were to ask anyone in the public, I haven't, because I don't feel this is a conducive place for the public to comment, they'd have to sit here for two hours to be able to say something. The, the township board has public comments at the beginning and the end, you can comment on anything. That way someone can come here in the beginning of the meeting, public comment, go home, have dinner with their family. You know, my kids, this is a bedtime I didn't have with my kids, because I'm here with you all, you know? And that's not fair to ask of the public. That's why I haven't asked the public to come here. Finally, you all eliminate a lot of things that said, "Consider." Consider does not obligate you or the township board to do anything. I only, the only thing that I've said publicly to you all last meeting was, keep the things that say, "Consider," if one person comes in here, and keep that smaller, smaller, smaller houses on smaller lots. I don't care about the smaller houses and small lots that much, but, but the fact that you all are eliminating "consider," I feel like it's taking the public out of it. That gives the public the opportunity to comment, to, to tell you all what's going on. So, so yeah, I have concerns. I don't know what I'm going to do coming out of this. I have, you know, different options. I can go to the township board and say, hey, this is the way I think, I think it should be, and try to get public to, to agree with me. I don't know, I think that's necessarily my role. But I do think I'm going to ask the township board to, to ask you all to do better, to, to send some of this back, to get better public comments, and to try to, to, to really try to keep those items that say, "Consider," because that doesn't obligate you or the township board to do anything, and I think it honors the process that this consultant went through. And so, yeah, that's, that's where I'm at tonight. Thank you all for listening to me.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Can I just respond real quick?
Oh, please, go for it.
My, my question.
My, my request is that you actually look at what was recommended before you say, "We removed all the considers," because there's not that much that was removed. Some, yes, others, no. And if you look what's in there, there's, I'm not sure if you've seen the, the document, but I hope you look at the document before you make your final judgment.
I know public comments, not for back and forth, I have. And, and there's at least, I, I don't have them in front of me right now, but at least seven or 10 items that are considered that you all are deleting. So that's a lot, that's a lot.
I also want to comment on, all, all the items that we're considering, it, it's, it's not like we're just going to bring it up again later on. These are items where, where, where the township is going to hire a consultant to, to come back and bring us information and look into these items, you know? And if we have consultants, and I don't think it's very beneficial to have consultants bring, you know, spend, send money consultants to bring forth a lot of information that, that this board has no interest in approving, you know?
Additional comments? Okay, Mark, we'll move to you, please. Mr. Mills.
Thank you. Do we, do we do this weekly, do we do it regularly? Mark Mills, 23 of 509 West River, is that what we're supposed to?
There you go, we've got you covered.
First of all, I just want to say, I appreciate the collaboration, going back and forth here. I know this has been a lot of work for you and for Ross and for everybody else involved in this. I'm coming to this a little bit later than I probably should be. I was listening to this earlier online, I got here as soon as I could, and again, I appreciate what you all are doing. I see this as more of a fluid, like a living document, so to speak, meaning I think we should have a little bit of flexibility as we go forward. And, and probably some of that's in there, and I think maybe in some cases is not, maybe to touch on some of the things that Kyle was saying, not everything, but to have something for consideration, I don't think is such a bad thing, depending on what the topic is. But I think we have to consider some type of growth, which it sounds like you all have, right? Especially down Macomb Street, the single-family dwellings. I see that with the business-type district with dense housing, like you were talking about earlier before I got here, and I appreciate that. And I, I think that's what Macomb Street needs to help the businesses prosper and grow, right? And I don't think anybody here is going to disagree with that. I just would like to see the, the final document have a little more flexibility in what we can do in the future, not be like as finite as it's sounding. And I'm saying as it's sounding because I have to review it all entirely again myself. So I looked at this a long time ago, before some of the changes were made, I kind of had to agree accordingly with her. But I do like what's going on, I love the collaboration going back and forth, I know more changes are coming, and maybe perhaps we could open this up to a little more public interaction or comment, not saying it hasn't been done already, but I don't know if there's another window we can do for that before it comes to our board. Is that a possibility? Can we bring more public comment into it?
There will be another public hearing on this. When, when this document is actually finalized and the Planning Commission is ready to, to vote on it, at that meeting, there will be a, a public hearing associated with the document again.
Okay.
As the last step before it, before it leaves us to go to you.
So let me, I guess, rephrase that. To have more public input before we get to that point, is that a possibility? To give it the opportunity? I'm not saying, if people don't comment, they don't comment. It is what it is.
Well, Ross has left open the, the website.
Well, I thought it was shut down, so I apologize.
No, he still, we, we talked about that, and he kept, sixty-five days was the legal minimum, but there's no reason not to, not to continue to leave it open if people, you know, if, because this was, projects were supposed to be done last November, so.
Right.
Just leave it open, and, and if more public comment comes in, then it's an opportunity to, for something to review.
Okay, so I was, I misunderstood, and I apologize for that. So as of right now, just so I'm correct on this issue, is people can still, right now, send you messages through the portal?
Correct.
Hey, I heard the meeting, I saw this, I saw that, like this, don't like that. And you can still get those type of messages?
Correct, and we will, and it will be reflected in the final document. Every single public comment that was received in that portal, or to me via email, it will be reflected in the final document, and it will be considered at the next, at the public hearing where there'll be a public notification saying, "We will be adopting the master plan at this date, and, you know, please comment, come in and comment on the plan," and those will all, all comments at that point will be reflected in the document, in person too.
That's great news, and I, again, I apologize to everybody up there. I, I was still the understanding that was close, so my apologies. And that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you.
Ross, how many, how many people have commented so far? I, I believe, it seems to me like it's very few, so I just want to.
So I think that we received, shoot, I shouldn't know this off the top of my head, but I think we had around twenty-five comments in the portal, and then like five to six written comments, written, like papers, letters to me, so.
Am I right that some of those twenty-five were from the same people?
It's definitely, they were saying, yeah, it was, you could tell that that person was saying the same thing, just different every.
So it's, it's been open, just there, there, there hasn't been that many. I was surprised how few comments there, there has been from the community.
Yeah, I mean, typically, you know, with the master plan process, a lot of people just don't comment in general. I mean, we have received a relatively healthy amount of comments on this so far, so.
Ross, regarding the, the housing section, housing assessment section?
Yep.
I've been working with that offline, you know, I got that, I got that on a hard drive from you.
Yep.
Is that actually on the webpage as an appendix?
It was not, because at the time of distributing the draft to the public, I, that was communicated to me to not be included in the draft.
Okay, well, that was a misunderstanding between you and me, as I discussed it with you.
Right.
That I was, I was objecting to one single table in that, in that document to be eliminated, not the entire document.
Yeah, yeah. That must have been, yeah, that was a miscommunication, but that can be republished, but.
Is there any reason it just can't be added as another appendix?
Yeah, no, it could definitely be added as an appendix right now, right?
Now, that was not the, that was not the intent to remove the whole thing. There's, there were, there was a lot of other stuff in there which was perfectly fine. It was one, one graph or one, one slide in there which was ridiculous.
Well, I think we should keep it in its entirety, though.
Which, which is what, which is what I actually presented this commission two meetings ago, when I presented all my data, and I discussed that. So let's make sure that that gets on the website.
Cool.
Thank you.
But that's, but it's including it in its entirety, right?
It's, the, the information is there, but not in the format of the table. The numbers are there, the conclusions are the same, the observations relative to that are the same, but the presence of a, of a useless table is not.
So you don't want the original draft that was presented?
What I have, what you, what you gave me as an attachment was perfectly fine.
Oh, perfect, okay.
That was exactly what, that was exactly what we needed.
All right.
In fact, I don't even know if that, if that individual slide ever was, was, was in the housing assessment, because it came in so early.
Yeah, no, that, that was pulled from the housing assessment and, and placed in the community snapshot appendix. So it was sort of, because the housing needs assessment wasn't part of the, the scope of the master plan, like the deliverables, like Smith Group just said, hey, we're going to do this housing needs assessment for you guys, and we're going to present you with the draft of it. And that was at that point.
That's where that was.
Yeah, and then you, then that's when the, the miscommunication was had, where, don't include it, like we have, we don't want it, but that was a miscommunication on our part, apparently, apparently.
Okay.
So I can include that as an appendix.
Yeah, please do.
Yep.
It should be there.
Yep.
Additional comments from the public? No hands. All right, let's bring it back to the table. Any final thoughts?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I have one commercial, if that's all right, if you'll entertain me.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So I'm taking off my Grozeal resident hat and putting on for my day job with SEMCOG, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. We have an upcoming meeting, it's like a training, it's called SEMCOG 101, and it's open to the public in general, but like any newly-elected officials or any, you know, appointed officials that are interested in learning more about the ways that the, our organization can help you out with regard, with a variety of things, including funding, funding and technical assistance. It is available on April fourteenth. It will have breakfast and it will have lunch and a networking opportunity. And so if you're interested, you know, please register for that. I will send a link out to all the commissioners over here.
Sounds like a real good stamp.
Definitely.
Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Chair, to adjourn. All in favor?
Hold on, just one question, do we have a next meeting date?
Oh, yes, good point. Are we, are we fine with the third, the same date? The third Thursday, or third Wednesday, sorry?
Well, oh, are we adjusting?
Yeah, I mean, just because Brian's in the first Monday and the third Wednesdays of every month, and unless we think we can get this turned around by the first Monday.
Well, we'll never get it by the first, I guarantee you that.
What date are we talking about? We're talking in concept here on. Of March.
I'm booked for something and I can't remember. Oh, no, never mind, yeah, I can do the nineteenth.
Okay, how does March nineteenth look to people?[1688.76]